Okay, here's our agenda meeting for this morning. Called order by me and then we're going to have the invocation by Commissioner Chris Gurley, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Antonio Williams, we'll have the approval of the minutes. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, good morning. Under unfinished business, we would like to remove that at this time. The DSS Board did meet yesterday and there's still some discussion that needs to take place, so a recommendation is not ready at this time. And then we would remove that, but that should be ready for our next meeting. The recommendation, but under new business, we'd like to give you an update on OSHA testing requirements. There's been some changes in recent appeals. We just want to give you a heads up of where we think we see that going. So that would be number two under new business.
Okay.
And that's all the changes.
So that's all the adjustments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Special presentations. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
All right. First, we will have recognition of the Wayne County Finance Department's GFOA certification of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And I believe this is our 25th year. So we'll have finance out here and recognize them and appreciate the work they've done. Number two will be an update on some of the changes in our GIS mapping by Julio Garido, some of the different things that he is doing and making it better and easier for the citizens of Wayne County. And then number three, announcement of community development grant, funds for the neighborhood revitalization program for Rolandwood Community in Dudley. And we'll have that announcement as well.
We don't have any opponent coming in, Mr. Chairman. So there's no opponents?
No. And we've taken off unfinished business and if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'll go through the consent.
Go right ahead.
One is applications for elderly or disabled exclusion. Those are on pages 13 through 22. They've been reviewed and recommended for approval by our tax department. Number two is application for present use value on pages 23, 24, and again, recommended for approval by our tax department. And then number three, budget amendments, and I'll turn that out.
Okay, your first budget amendment begins on page 25 of your agenda packet. This is for the sheriff's office requesting to reallocate $7,057 from professional services to non-capital computer. This is budgeted funds for the professional standards accreditation program. As you recall, this was budgeted in one line item. We weren't sure where the costs were going to be, so now that they're sort of into that program, they're allocating it out to the appropriate line items. You have a budget amendment for social services in the amount of $273,281. This is additional funding from the state for the low-income water assistance program, and this will match up to the state funding authorization. This is a new program implemented by the state due to COVID-19.
And all of that is going through the DSS?
Yes, sir. You have a budget amendment for the sheriff's office in the amount of $23,341.50. They've received a grant from the NC Governor's Crime Commission. This will be for the purchase of tasers for the sheriff's office. Your next budget amendment is for social services in the amount of $3,832. This is for the low-income energy assistance program. They've received additional state funds and are balancing to their state funding authorization. And that's all I have for you today.
Good. Light. That's your order.
And then number four is motion to approve the sale of surplus property located at 412 East Walnut Street, Goldsboro, jointly owned with the city of Goldsboro as requested by the city of Goldsboro to Oliver Design. And this is what was pulled from our last consent agenda by Commissioner Foster, and we have some additional information.
Good morning. This was on for consideration at the last meeting, removed off the consent agenda and asked for additional information. I followed up with the city and I included that email in the agenda packet. So the buyer, the person who submitted the offer is Oliver Design. The managing member or president of that company is John Oliver. He is related to the adjoining property owner, Ms. Ava Oliver. And you can see what the process was from the city from that email. So I do think last meeting I stated that for conforming lots, under the session law, they do have to reach out to adjoining property owners. That's according to the city, that's technically not correct. So for non-conforming lots, they have to reach out to the adjoining property owners. This was a conforming lot, so it can't be sold to a dollar. So my understanding is that this offer was solicited by Mr. Oliver and his company, and they just, I don't think it's any nonprofit or anything. I think this is just his own, this own business. I do know Mr. Oliver, he occasionally purchases properties via tax foreclosures, so I'm familiar with him, and I think he has some rental properties throughout the city.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, I never, I asked for that information, conforming and non-conforming, and I never got it. So I'm still, I'm still a tad bit confused on that. I didn't see anything about that in the Senate bill. I only saw adjoint, adjoining and non, substandard and standard. So can you break that down a little bit for me, please?
I have, I emailed you an explanation, so substandard just means that it's a non-conforming lot according to the city zoning ordinance. So that means it's not big enough to build a structure on or anything like that.
Okay, so even with that, I know one you sell for a dollar, but in, under the reading, what I read under that bill, it seems like you still contact the owners either way. And you might sell for a dollar if it's non-conforming, but if it's conforming, you would sell for 50% of the tax value.
That's the minimum they can accept.
But you still, you would still contact the owner for first right? It doesn't seem, I don't know if this was done.
It doesn't, it doesn't, from the email, it doesn't look like the city did that. We weren't involved in that. The city did it and then they sent it over to us.
So how can we approve something that wasn't done right? Is my question, next question. Regardless of, you know, someone trying to buy, you know, if the process wasn't done right, how are we approving it?
I mean, that, we didn't solicit that offer, that's, that's on the city.
But I'm saying, but it's here now, and it's for our approval as well because we, it's a joint.
Correct.
Ownership, so once again, how can we approve something that wasn't done right?
I mean, that is up to the board to decide if you all want to approve that or not.
I mean, for me personally, I think the city should go back and do the matter the right way. Because if you do, if you do it the wrong way, you open up ground that would be done the wrong way from now forever. In the past, I sat on the city council for four years, I know that that was done a lot. There are a lot of issues coming up with land, giving it to nonprofits, nonprofits turning around, selling it. It's a lot of issues, and those issues need to be stocked. And if, you know, we're joint owners with the city, I don't approve, approving something that was not done right legally. That's just my thing.
I got a question on the, on the conforming lot. You do not have to solicit to the property owners or you do?
I attached, let me see if I can find it. The session law should be in the packet. There it is, page 45, session law 2004-94. So specifically section 1C, standard surplus real property may be disposed under the following procedures, and it, and it lays that out.
So I guess what I'm asking is if, I mean, I guess it's open for anybody to purchase?
It is. I mean, specifically section two, and this is what Commissioner Foster is referring to. When selling standard properties, the city of Goldsboro will be, will at a minimum notify the adjacent property owners and individuals and entities who have bid on surplus property in the past, as well as all local real estate forms. I think that's what you're referring to.
So they didn't do that, so they did not do that?
They did not.
Basically, they're not, the city didn't follow the procedure?
Not according to section two.
Okay, well then I got.
But that's the information that I provided.
And that's what I've been, that's what I said, that's what I'm saying, like, so I mean, how, if you didn't, you're not following a bill that was brought to us by our Senate, then what's, what's, I mean, you know what I mean? What are we supposed to do here? I'm not going to approve it, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's just, it's not, but I mean.
And generally speaking, the way that we get notified of it is the city goes through their process, they email us and say, put it on the agenda for approval. So county staff wasn't involved in?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I understand that, you know what I'm saying, but I'm just.
But you, but you are correct. That, that section specifically says at a minimum notify.
So it puts us in a situation to approve something that somebody has not followed the procedures, is that?
What they have followed is under the standard upset bid procedure, which is 168-269, I believe, and that's the procedure that they followed. That's the general procedure that we follow, where we solicit an offer, we come to you for approval, and then we advertise in the paper for 10 days for upset bids. So that's the process they followed. What they didn't do according to their email was notify the adjoining property owners of the bid.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm in agreement with doing things the right way. And I agree that, you know, we're opening up a can of worms because there's going to always be properties coming from the city that are going to end up on our table. Actually, I was watching the meeting yesterday, and they had several other properties that will be coming to us. So we need to kind of nip this in the bud right now so that they can clear up their processes over there. So I agree, we shouldn't do anything until they notify the people and do things according to statute.
I think Mr. Borden or Andrew needs to say, you know, to show us the documentation that you're doing it by X, whatever your session law is. I mean, that way we're, I mean, because I agree, if we start out like this, we're going, there's no way that, well, you did it on the last one, why don't you do it on this one, did it?
I did get confirmation, confirmation from the city that for non-conforming lots, so those properties that they sell for a dollar, they do mail the adjoining property owners on those and notify them.
But they did not notify them here. And my question is this, can we just, I think we're in agreement that they have not fulfilled the obligations of the statute, and as such, can we just pull this and send this back to them and tell them to follow the statute? They need to go back through the process of abiding by the statute.
And make sure they, they give us the documentation from further properties that, you know, we got, so we don't have this issue.
Are we in agreement to do that?
I mean.
Yes.
Has the city got this bill passed without consulting the county?
Oh, really? Well, and I thank, thank Commissioner Foster for bringing that to our attention because it's very clear now in looking at the statute that they have not followed that. But rather than us having an open discussion in our regular meeting, if the board is in agreement, which it appears that we are, that we'll send that back to them and tell them to follow the statute, and provide proof that they have in fact notified the adjoining property.
And it puts us in an unusual position because we get offers from the public and they think that we can sell it for a dollar, but it only applies to the city. So there's a lot of confusion, I think, around property owners because if they go to the city and the city solicits the offer, this bill applies. If not, then we have to follow the regular general statute, which is actually the next item on the consent agenda.
Okay, with that in mind, if you will, make the note there to during the adjustments of the agenda that that item will be pulled.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Then our second number four.
You got two number fours, huh?
Motion to adopt resolution 2021-45 and 2021-46, resolutions declaring surplus real property and authorizing its sale. The surplus property is located at 611 and 613 East Spruce Street and 306 North Carolina Street, Goldsboro, and again, jointly owned with the city of Goldsboro.
And unlike the previous item, these are buyers that reached out to me. I've dealt with them before in foreclosures. So 306 North Carolina Street is actually the adjoining property owner. She and her parents live at that address, and they're looking to expand out. So they've made an offer of $2,000 and made the deposit. And the other one is 611 and 613. That was from Stephanie Ross and her husband as well, so I've updated that resolution. They are not the adjoining property owners. They just solicited those offers or brought those offers to us. Both of these are prior tax foreclosures. I will say, we're selling these according to 168-269, which is the upset bid procedure in light of some of the recent discussions. I went ahead and emailed or, excuse me, mailed notices to the adjoining property owners, letting them know that these offers are being considered today and what the upset bid period would be. So the adjoining property owners should have noticed that there will be a upset bid period if they are interested in putting in an offer.
So is that 10 days?
It's 10 days, and that run date is, I believe, next Tuesday.
So how about with the holidays, does that got any bearings on it?
No, it doesn't. But that run date is next Tuesday, just given how the paper runs, so it's 10 days from next Tuesday.
Okay. So for further clarification, just for my benefit, these properties are in the city as well?
They are.
So why are we selling the versus the city going through their process?
Because these people called me directly and not the city.
Okay, so if they contact the city and it goes through that process, they're governed by the Senate bill?
That's correct.
Where they must notify adjoining property owners?
And if, and if they come to us, then we're governed by 168-269.
Which is an upset bid process.
Correct. And we've also sold some on gov deals before. We've done that. We've had limited success on those just because generally the adjoining property owners and people in the city don't regularly have access to the internet. So we get a lot of people out of city who buy them, and we've had some complaints that, you know, it's not fair to the local residents. So we've had more success going this route versus gov deals for real property.
But in a sense of fairness, you are notifying the adjoining property owners of the bid that you receive and a process in which they could upset the bid if they so desire.
I gave them a copy of the public notice and then gave them my phone number and the clerk's phone number.
Okay, any, any further questions on that?
Yes. So, I mean, it's just, I understand because it's what Commissioner Chairman just asked, but to, it just seems a little murky because you don't have to have any contact with the city when coming straight through us. And it just, I don't, like I said, I, I didn't get a chance to read through the statute that you just stated, so I don't, I don't know a whole lot about it. But it's still jointly owned by the city, correct? But if you come directly to us, you don't have to have any city approval?
We do, we do. So after we go through.
You still have to send this through the city.
After we go through the upset bid procedure, then we send it to the city council, and the city council has approved this as well. Both, both bodies have to approve it.
So it's basically, it's whoever gets to first, the other ones got to approve it after we do everything?
That's how, that's how we traditionally approach them. We run through the process first, and then we send it over to the city saying, we've gone through upset bids, there's been no upset bids, do you accept the offer? And then they approve it or decline it?
Yeah, I just, I don't, I would like to, in the future, see us some way on a better path, wavelength, something, because it just seems, it just seems totally off because, I mean, if I'm a property owner and adjoining property owner, and I put in a bid for X amount of dollars or whatever with the county, then knowing that I could have put a bid in with the city for a dollar, that, you know what I mean?
It's murky.
And not knowing, you know what I mean? And then it's like almost with me, I feel like if, if, if I didn't tell you that, you see what I'm saying? And I'm not taking advantage of you.
Right. And if people. At the end of the day. If people call me and I take a look at it and I have suspicions that it's a non-conforming lot, I'll tell them, you might need to call over to planning in the city because you own the adjoining property. I think this is non-conforming lot. You might want to talk to them because that would be a better route for you to go, but it is certainly a cumbersome process just because of upset bids.
306, conforming or non-conforming?
It's conforming. And then 6, 611, yeah, 611, 613, both of those are conforming.
And what were the tax values on?
I'm sorry?
The tax values on those?
For 306, it was $3,900. And then for 611, 613, the combined tax value was $5,140.
And their bid is?
$2,400.
We're still almost coming out about 50%.
Right.
I can't, it's still what it kind of sort of ended up being the same, so that's not a big problem.
Right.
I just want to make sure that, you know, I mean, like, we're not taking advantage of anyone and not kind of sort of letting them know.
Right.
But that's not a big difference.
And I know since.
It would have been if they would have went through the city because it's still been 50%.
I know since I've gotten here, we, I've tried to reach out to the city to have a little bit more communication about the tax foreclosures and surplus properties and everything like that. So it's, it really is just a cumbersome process for the jointly owned properties.
Well, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions on that? Okay, Mr. County Manager, we'll move to five.
Number five is motion to approve the annual community services block grant application. Again, this is an annual thing that we do. Number six is motion to approve changes to the Wayne County ordinances to comply with session law 2021-138, new general statute 153A-123, and general statute 14-14. Have Andrew again.
Good morning again. If you recall at the last meeting, you made some changes to the criminal enforcement of our ordinances. So what you did last meeting is the new law actually removes certain types of ordinances that we can enforce criminally. The second part of that, we have some ordinances that we can enforce criminally, that we still want to, but we have to change the language in order to comply with the new session law. So really, all that's required, we cited that in our ordinances, that they can be convicted of a misdemeanor. We did not say that they can be convicted of a class three misdemeanor under North Carolina General Statute 14-4. That is required under the new law. So they were first introduced at the new meeting, under the new law, they can't be adopted in the first meeting, so we had to move them to today. So you have six ordinances today that were changed in the language on, only to cite North Carolina General Statute 14-4. And that would allow the county to still proceed with criminal enforcement of those specific ordinances.
So to be clear, all we're doing is just basically conforming to the law, adding that statute, and that it'd be a class?
It's a class three misdemeanor, which is the lowest level misdemeanor. Also, if you can see too on page 63 of the agenda packet, there is actually a new provision of 14-4 that anyone who's charged with this, there's actually a way for them to remedy the situation so they can't be convicted if they're showing a good faith effort to comply, or if they can show that the non-compliance was related to unemployment, homelessness, mental health, substance abuse, things like that. And that's not something we would address, that would be something the district attorney and the courts would decide after charging, but just for your information. And I will say, I've been here over four years. I think we've had one person that we've ever charged with a criminal, with a class three, and that ended up being dropped, if I recall. So we rarely go the criminal enforcement route on these.
So that provision will actually be added to the ordinance so people could see that?
Not in, that's a, that's a change to 14-4. So by referencing 14-4 in our new ordinances, that, that takes care of it.
Yeah, that was multiple, Mr. Chair. You know, like, is there a way to show the public, because, you know, people, they don't know, they don't, some people don't know what the law is. So if we got a new change, it should be posted somewhere.
Okay.
I would tend to agree. In our ordinance, I think we need to actually have the wording there so that they know there is a, some relief that they could have by showing good faith effort.
Well, we published it, can we put it in a different color to show the changes? That make it easier for somebody to, I'm just asking.
So is the request that we actually incorporate the language for compliance into the ordinance itself, or that we just make it available to the public?
I would say make it available to the public so that they can kind of, they can clearly see, you know, what the rules are.
We could do that.
If you are breaking the rules.
It's kind of hard to follow the law when you don't, when you don't know when they change it.
Yeah, well, you're right. Okay, any further items or discussion on item six?
Number seven is motion to approve final plat for Glenn Laurel, section 13, as recommended by the Wayne County Planning Board, and Barry is here.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, this is a final plat for Glenn Laurel, section 13. There are 13 lots that are before you today. This subdivision is off of Dog Pay Road, just past, going past Paytown Road, the fire department in Paytown, turn left on Dog Pay, this will be right down the road. This is in the back of the subdivision. Since this is a final plat, audio improvements are in the streets are built. We do have to build the standards later from DOT. Average lot size in this phase is 18,250 square feet, so it's well over the minimum, or quite a bit over the minimum. Planning Board has reviewed this and does recommend approval of this subdivision. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
What's your lot numbers, Barry? 110, 107?
108, 109, 115. Is it on there?
Yeah, their lot numbers, 108 and 109 is included, and then 115 through 125.
Is there room to expand that further back?
That's right, about a pond, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a, his farm is, the owner's farm is kind of back behind here. There is the potential to expand that a little more in the future there to the, or the HRA family limited partnership side. If you look on the left side of the page, there is an opportunity there to expand that in the future.
Is that the reason there's no car to sign?
That's right. You know, yeah, there is, like I said, there is another phase that potentially will be coming in there.
But that, where it says Glenn Laurel Drive, where it stops in at seven, that goes up to the adjacent landowner, correct?
Right.
On the right hand side?
On the right hand side. Oh, that actually, that actually continues on, the subdivision actually continues on to the right and goes on out to Dog Pay Road. Into the existing phases.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Then number eight, motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, at 5:15 PM in the commissioner's meeting room in the Wayne County Courthouse Annex. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comments regarding a proposed economic development incentive grant to Hasakawa Micron International. The Board of Commissioners will consider a $240,000 incentive grant payable over a 10-year period in the shame for a company's investment of $6.3 million in capital improvements and to create 16 jobs in Wayne County.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, and moving on.
And then new business, motion to amend the Wayne County Board of Commissioners' rules and procedures, and that is on page 76. And then we did add a number two, new business update on OSHA testing requirements. So there's been some court changes recently. And then county managers' report, Board of Commissioners' committee reports, and then adjournment.
And I want to remind everyone that immediately following our commissioners' meeting, Public Affairs will be filming those holiday greetings, and I think they're going to be right outside here, aren't they?
Right. Right where we took the commissioners' pictures, all that little walkway by public affairs.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank you. If not, we stand in recess until nine o'clock?